I think we've got to turn around in forty-eight hours.
Good deal.
As soon as I take a seat, we're on.
Quite reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, well, good evening. We'll get started. Welcome to the Town Council Workshop on Bessie Commons Project. I think by way of introduction, why don't we go, so we can start with what around the table, so we all know who we are.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come to this workshop. My name is Cindy Taylor, and I'm the President of Housing Initiatives of New England. And my office is directly across the street, above Scarborough grounds. And we own that property in Bessie Commons next door. And our primary business is senior housing, and we have complexes throughout New Hampshire and Maine. And I'm most proud of Bessie Commons, probably because I went to school there. There's not many places you can develop, redevelop, and say that you went to school there. So Bessie Commons is a 54-unit complex. We have a waiting list right now of ninety people. And in order for that, you know, to fill those kind of needs, it will take this complex and a few others around town probably to fill the needs that the town of Scarborough has.
Do we just do an introductions quickly, and then we'll just go into the details?
Sure. And then, yeah, then I'll give it back to you.
Yeah. Not too far.
I'm John Kaminski. I'm an attorney with Truman Woodson, and I'm working with Cindy and her group on the development of the project.
Bill Daddo, the councilman.
Tom Hall, town manager.
Katie Holy, town councillor.
Paul Johnson, town councillor.
Don Hamill, town councillor.
Jean-Marie Catarina, town council.
Phil Sosser from Bernstein, sure, for the town, and help us, sitting in for my colleague, Sean Mueller, who's really been working on this project. Couldn't be here today.
Thank you for being here. Do you have any introductory remarks, or shall we just go right to?
I think we can get right into it. I guess the point I want to impress upon the council and the public is that the town is really interconnected on this project. Fundamentally, there's a ninety-nine-year lease. It's town-owned property, subject of a lease that is to benefit this project. This Phase Two was contemplated in the original documents, TIF documents, and frankly, everything else, even the lease, I think, makes reference to it. There's some particular changes that need to be finessed, if you will, for purposes of securing the financing. And we wanted the opportunity in a workshop format to make sure you understood the history, introduce the project, and talk about next steps.
So primarily, so we are now planning this forty-unit senior complex. We're calling it Bessie Commons Two until we have a better name for it. And it's very interesting, because we thought that we had this incorporated into our original TIF that was, that the town agreed to when we first built it, Bessie One. But as it turns out, we didn't have the financial information that's necessary for TIF. So our council, John Kaminski, and others working with your council, has indicated that we really need to go back and revamp that now that we have new financial information to obviously underwrite this for your taxes and for the TIF and the requirements of the TIF. So I don't think the TIF itself has changed any from our first one in terms of the requirements. This is a housing TIF that was established with the cooperation of Maine Housing Authority. We will be using Maine Housing Authority for our financing. We will be restricting our rents. We're a nonprofit organization, which is why we like this idea of leasing the land from the town and basically being a steward of your property. And we're trying to do a good job. I hope you feel that we are. Be happy to show you Bessie One anytime you'd like to go through it. There's, I know there are some people on the council that have not been in that building. But we're very proud of it. So we have a lot of programs there. The Scarborough Land Trust has been using that property for their lectures, Friends of the Scarborough Marsh, I'm sorry. I'm part of both, I mean, I really support both of those entities, but the Friends of the Scarborough Marsh have been doing lectures there and inviting people from the public in. So we try to make it more than just really straightforward housing. That being said, you can see from the rendering behind me, this property is going to, I just could step this over to keep it quite simple.
Cindy, I wonder if you could just step to the podium, just so we can hear your voice?
Yeah.
Pull it back.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So this would be?
I'll be your better white here.
Is it? Okay. So I hope this is being recorded properly. This is the subdivision plan that we had done originally. And you can show them the property lots we have.
Sure. Property lines are here.
And then we, when we did this, we created two lots, because we knew that we were going to have a mortgage on the first lot for Phase One, and we created this second lot. And we had it all part of the TIF. I guess in hindsight, it probably would have been just as easy if we had just done it Phase One and Phase Two and then come back to where we are today. But now, because we incorporated Lot Two into our TIF, we have to take that out of the original TIF and then come back and put together a new TIF based on the value of the property now and what it will be valued at when our development is completed. So that's primarily the program that we're talking about tonight. Does that work?
Yes, it does. It's on.
Thank you. This is a, please allow people to do this. So just by way of introduction again, this is the access road. Our main entrance is away from Route One for Bessie One. You have the southern orientation here. We are going to create basically a cul-de-sac, parking on both sides of the building, drop off for residents. Very straightforward design, but I just wanted to point that out to you. I don't know if you have any questions on that. We don't need to get into too much detail. I know there's probably more important things to have to do with the TIF. I'm here tonight, though, I'm happy to answer any questions. So that being said, I think the building form itself. There you go. This whole design is taken from probably what we've, what I know was traditional in Scarborough, which is a white-clavering building. The town hall used to be a white-clavering building. We did, the same design format was used on Bessie Square. And we tried to pick up on those details in our addition on the school, as well as introducing masonry brick to match the school that's out there. So my goal is to get as much brick on this as possible for two reasons. One is it's better for maintenance, and second of all, it's a good mix of materials to go with the school. Forty one-bedroom units will be built here. That's the, when we're trying to serve people in the affordable level, that's what they really want. They want to have full kitchen, full bathroom, dining room, living room combination, but a one-bedroom, because that's what they can afford. So the rents will be restricted, as we say here. There'll be an average of sixty percent of area median. Things that, those rents here will be around nine hundred and fifty dollars a month, includes everything. And again, we have a huge waiting list for this. So that's the program. Now, if we want to go back to the TIF, I don't know where you want to start on the TIF. Do you want to go through the fact that our lease originally contemplated that we would not have to pay taxes on this property? And we always knew that we had to do that later we threw a TIF arrangement. So I'm hoping that you all agree with us that it will serve the community well if we do.
It would be helpful to explain why taxes are applied in the first place. And as I understand it, it's a function of your corporate structure for purposes of gaining access to the federal tax, to the tax credit program.
Oh, okay, you want to start from ground zero? Sorry. All right. So this is a program.
Well, I think it's fundamental.
Yes. This is a program that's called the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And in order to raise funds under this program, it's basically set up for private enterprises to invest in housing. So we form a limited partnership that's a for-profit entity, even though we're a controlling general partner in it. The limited partners in this are typically banks and lending institutions that are consortium, come together, and they loan us against the basic cost of the project. What the tax credits pay for in this case is, it covers almost a hundred percent of our cost for building this. In this case, I'm using a four percent tax credit, so I'm not getting quite as much as the nine percent. You may have heard this from other developments in town. There's a difference. There's, it's a two-tier system. You don't get quite as much money out of the four percent, but it's not as competitive. And for me, I want to get this done. I'm going to work hard to get as many sources as I need to do this properly, one of which is the TIF. I need these, I need to know that this money will come back into the project to make it sustainable. But overall, the low-income housing tax credit money pays for the bricks and mortar. The rents and the TIF will help us in the operating side to make sure that we can continue to operate this. So in order to keep the rents low and meet the needs in the community for people that aren't otherwise being served, I mean, you need this. And I don't know if that's too simple, or if you need, you want to ask questions about that, but.
I just heard a request, an information request. I mean, the summary that was provided was very helpful, but would it be possible for us to get a copy of the current lease agreement, as well as a copy of the actual TIF, the one that's in place, so we can look at those details?
Of course.
That would be helpful. I did have a question, Cindy, about your, I mean, clearly, this is a, you know, huge public benefit. It's a huge priority for us. It's great to have someone who's, you know, from here and is invested in the community in so many ways. But I am a little curious about the structure, the financial structure that you mentioned in terms of limited partnership, and how that would be affected through this change. Is that, will that be closed out, and that will be somehow changed, or will be a new one created, or how, what will happen to that partnership?
Basically, there'll be a new, there'll be a new partnership set up for the second phase. We have a group that we're partnered with on Phase One. It's called Northern New England Housing Investment Fund. That's a local organization that's located in Portland. It was set up primarily to syndicate these kind of properties for affordable housing in Maine and New Hampshire. And so that will probably, most likely, be our partner. But what we do is we go out and solicit bids for being partners to us, and whoever will give us the best dollar, dollar value will be our partner. We have, we've only worked with two people. And one is a nonprofit out of New York City called NDC Corporation. They've been fabulous partners with us on probably, I don't know, twenty of our properties. But Northern New England is right here. They're local. They understand our needs. We love working with them, and that, I'm pretty sure that's who will be our partner. And so it's a very great relationship. They are committed to providing affordable housing. They will go out and solicit banks. It'll be TD and KeyBank and all the banks that you can think of in the state of Maine will come together to provide these funds. They will then pay it into us in a secure way, based on our progress in our construction and our occupancy, so we don't get final payment until we're fully occupied. It's a very secure program, as you can imagine. Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program was designed by the IRS. They are our masters in this, so we have to provide all the financial statements to, every annually, to Maine Housing, who is also a big partner in this.
And is this syndicated, or they're direct investors, the institutions that you mentioned?
It's syndicated, but it's syndicated through one partner, limited partner, that we have, that will be set up by Northern New England. Northern New England Housing Investment Fund, they go out and solicit the banking partners. So our interface, even though we know who is in the syndication, our direct dealings are always with Northern New England Housing Investment Fund. And they have a full staff. I mean, you know, they come out and they walk through the properties, they make sure that they're maintained well, that we're doing what we need to do, provide financial statements to them annually. If they want, they know that they can get them quarterly or every six months. They check on our insurances. I mean, this, this is one of those programs with, I'm pretty sure, is just absolutely, has the maximum oversight that you could possibly imagine. So from your standpoint, you know, I don't think you have to worry about us not meeting the income targets, not meeting your requirements of, you know, renting to affordable people, the people that we want, we want to serve in this community. So I think that's a good thing.
Other questions or comments? Jean-Marie, you want to?
One question that just comes to mind that people in the audience may want to know is, do Scarborough people get first dibs at housing here?
We can give a preference for Scarborough.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you done that in the past?
We have. We've done it in, yeah, we've done it in many communities. Most communities ask us about that. We can't restrict it.
Right.
We can definitely give a preference.
Okay.
And it's pretty easy.
Because I think that would be important. Because I think that would be important for the taxpayers to know that if we're in a TIF.
It's always important. But it's a... You know, this kind of housing is first come, first served, because people only, you know, when they need it, they need it. And so, they can't just wait years and years and years for housing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, I'm curious, do you know what your percentages currently are?
I can't tell you that.
Just... But I can find out. Okay. It's just a curious question more than anything else.
Anything?
Cindy, I think people would be interested to know how the sixty percent median income is arrived at. Is that something... Because that's very low. That really does serve the people who are in most need of assistance.
Correct.
For example, we have an eighty percent AMI for to define affordable housing under the ordinances for the town of Scarborough. So, this is even a lower...
It is.
...figure.
Threshold. And you know, there's two things about that. In our TIF documents, we said that we would have an average of sixty percent. And in the program, if we do one eighty percent, we have to do a percentage of thirty percent to make sure that we are still in a sixty percent average. But what that does for us is some people move in and then they have the opportunity to spend down, and then they still don't, you know, then they can still afford their rent. So, this is a program that the income levels are established by the federal government as well as the rents themselves. Like, we don't get to establish the rents. They are established for us annually. So, people have to have enough income. In this case, it's usually Social Security and then a small pension, and that's where your point to the sixty percent comes in because, you know, then they have enough to pay that rent, take care of their medications, their food. You know, it's not... It's a nice program. It's... We have a fabulous, fabulous community over there. So, I'm always hesitant to talk about restricting incomes or restrictions on those folks, but we really try to provide them with enough, you know, positive means over there so that they can live comfortably.
What is the average age in Bessie Commonsburg?
I think right now, we're probably at about seventy-six. And we can take people in at fifty-five, and generally speaking, I like that from the standpoint that if you get a few people that are in at fifty-five and, you know, the majority of the people are seventy-five to eighty-five, it makes a better community. It's just, you know, you don't feel like everybody is the same. We all like that integration, I think. It's like having your kids visit or your grandchildren.
I have a couple of things. So, you mentioned meeting space. I have been in there a few times, but are you talking, when you say meeting space, is it that common area when you first walk in? Or is there a separate meeting space as well?
In Bessie One?
Yeah.
In Bessie One, we have that beautiful place where you walk in.
Okay.
That has sunlight all day long.
Yeah, people usually doing puzzles and congregating there.
Yes. We have a bridge group that, you know, is there on Thursday nights. And then, over and above that, downstairs in the lower level is where we've been having the lectures because we've got a widescreen TV. They can use that for...
And you mentioned specifically, like, the land trust and friends of Scarborough Marsh that have other community groups. Are other community groups invited to reach out to you to use that space?
Always.
Or I just don't know that that's well-known.
I didn't know that.
And is the... Will there be space like that in the new building as well?
No, I don't need to create quite as much. I do have community space in here. I have laundry facilities on every level. I have sitting areas on all three levels. There's plenty of space. I anticipate that we'll continue to use the school. On the third floor of the school, we have two classrooms. There were... One was a science lab and the other was home economics, a sewing lab. And that is just as it is today, and we have forty-five to sixty-five quilters that come in on Thursday mornings.
So, not just residents?
No, no. Yes. Residents are invited, but it's mostly outsiders that come in. And I'll continue to do that as much as I can.
I think that's an important component also, particularly when you're considering the use of TIF funds and with the public piece. And then, my only other question was, my own mother's eighty-four. I've been working hard on getting her to move or transition here, but I know the thing that's really important is being active. Is there any planned connectivity for any walking trails or anything between the two buildings or on the campus itself?
We have lots of people that walk through the property and actually access the Eastern Trail, you know, going to Eastern Village.
That's what I was curious about.
Yeah. So, our property abuts the Eastern Village, and to the extent that they'll let us walk through there. There are trails. The kids use it all the time. You know, lots of people walk down through there. But the majority of our residents, they will cross the street and go to the park and come back around here and then cross over again.
Yeah.
So, there's... And there's people, you'll see them everywhere.
So, nothing formal planned, but some connectivity?
No. No. I mean, we have, you know, obviously, we have varying degrees of people with their help, depending on what they like to do and what they want to do. We have one resident over there right now who is going to be, I think, the site superintendent on the new building here. That has been a phenomenal point of entertainment for our residents.
Watching the big toys at work.
Exactly.
Mr. Hoffman watching that.
I think we're about two dozen site supervisors.
I'll just tell you, I couldn't use my office today because when they're doing the roll and vibrating the compaction, it's like being inside of a drum, literally. It is painful, so I have to go to the other end of the building. But anyway, this is a miraculous development here. I am... Every day, I say, I cannot believe how organized they are to do that job. It's remarkable.
Anything else pop up for anybody here at the table? Any members of the public that... Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I did have one other question. So, I understand we're going to be financing two-hundred thousand. Has that been structured yet in terms of what the total financing will be? And will there be some sort of prospectus or some sort of document?
No. Last year, we were awarded a hundred thousand dollars towards our gap financing from the Scarborough Affordable Housing Funds. I am going back to ask for another hundred thousand this year. That application has not been completed yet, and we will be doing it very soon.
Okay.
But we... But it is, we're hopeful that we can get another hundred.
And the other question I had, and maybe this is more of a governance question, but what will... So, how will the value created in Phase One, you know, be determined and then distributed? How will those... Is that... Or is that purely a private matter? Or is there any line of sight that the town might have? The reason I ask that is that we're trying to... We're focusing on, you know, trying to evaluate the financial performance of various TIFs that we've done, and this is a matter of a lot of discussion leading up to the Downs Commitment. So, is there a similar process that we would do to look at Phase One and find out how we did and what's going to happen there and then also Phase Two?
I'd love to have John respond to this. It's more about the town and what you capture than it is for us, but I'll turn it over to John.
Two things. First of all, reference to your prior question, when the TIF comes before you folks for adoption at a meeting later this month, there will be a comprehensive financial plan as part of the development program, which will have all of the sources and funds. So, you'll be able to see that all made out. On your second question, how do you measure the performance of one of these TIFs? I always like to think about that and when we have tax expenditures and state law as well, as whether or not the town has received something that lines up with its objectives at the time that it made the initial commitment to the TIF. So, if you have a tax increment financing that's going to be financing a facility that's going to create jobs, you want to see how many jobs we're creating, what level of income are they at? If you have a TIF that's designed to create senior housing, I think your questions are different. And your questions are, what was our objective? Our objective was to get a high-quality, affordable, senior housing project here in the town, and how has that worked out? Are people happy with it? Is it working out well? Is it full? Is it occupied? Do people want to live there? Is it attractive? These things are not as susceptible to quantification as the number of jobs, but they're susceptible to quantification in terms of occupancy, affordability levels, and then you've got the intangibles. Is it a healthy, safe, sanitary place for people to live? And for these kind of projects, it's fortunate because the town has partnered with others that are going to be doing the oversight. The town is relieved of the oversight burden because Main State Housing Authority is doing a lot of the oversight burden as well as the for-profit Northern New England Housing Investment Fund to protect its investment. So, the oversight, there's a lot of monitoring that goes on that the town doesn't have to do. But the bottom line is, I think, are your objectives being met?
That's helpful. Thanks.
The actual operation of the TIF is no different than other conventional TIFs. We... The assessor sets a value on the property, their tax is paid, and the TIF arrangement through its credit enhancement component returns the tax back to the taxpayer in this case.
Yeah, I would just add briefly that in the type of TIF, this is specifically an affordable housing TIF, which is a type of TIF that's allowed by statute. So, and the purpose of that is to encourage into affordable housing. It's a little different, obviously.
It would be different than the Downs.
The goals and the...
Right.
Right. It's a very similar process in terms of how you go through the process, but it's specifically designed to encourage affordable, livable housing, as the statute says. So, it's a little different. Main state housing is the entity at the state level that approves this, not the Department of Economic Community Development. So, that just shows you that there's a difference in what we're saying.
So, to have it straight, then, we would use whatever those criteria were for the first phase and the second phase.
Right.
So, but whatever those were, it might be good for us to go back and confirm, confirm what they were and then, you know, validate and verify what they're going to be for Phase Two.
One of the things that shot on, the attorney at Bernstein that's working on this and I have done, is we've used the existing documentation for the Phase One TIF as a model for what we're doing here. There have been some statutory changes we need to do to comply with what the state law has changed, but by and large, we're modeling it on what was done in Phase One.
Okay. Great.
The TIF documents, the development program documents in particular, will provide that kind of objective and describe the project and its purpose.
Great. And when will we see those?
Well, that's one of the reasons we thank you to, you know, entertaining this matter tonight. I think there's a bit of a timeline crunch. There's a state process and timeline that needs to be respected, and we're kind of up against it. So, at your next meeting, we'd like to introduce the documents to begin the process, and there's a statutory process that must be followed that requires multiple steps and public notice and such.
So, you know, tomorrow, we would provide it that you take action tonight, right? Then, we would advertise. We have a ten-day period for advertising prior to your next meeting, and if we... Thank you. And if we are successful to be able to put that together, we'll put it together tomorrow, and we will advertise and we'll be in front of the council at your next meeting.
Just to be clear, we have no action contemplated on the agenda. I think what they're looking for is a green light in terms of us being able to issue the public notice and make sure we meet the ten-day requirement.
Right. At this workshop, you know, if you gave us feedback and you said, no, we don't want to do this, we'd probably retreat. But if you think that there's a good support, we will take it to the next step and we'll be in front of you at your next meeting.
Okay.
So, should we... Well, any members of the public that have any questions or comments? Seeing none, why don't we want to go around the table and kind of just offer some feedback on these folks?
Yeah, I know. I'm... These are the only TIFs that I wholeheartedly support without question, the affordable housing TIFs. So, I mean, I don't have an issue with this. I think it makes a lot of sense. And being somewhat a senior residential specialist in real estate, I deal with people every day who don't have any place to move to. They can't afford it, and it's not a good situation for folks. So, to see more housing in such a great location, and I know the... I'm very familiar with what you've got going on over across the street at Bessie now, and it's just, I think it's a fabulous opportunity for the town. So, that's my thinking on it.
Tom?
I think past practice is the best predictor of future performance, and you're known quantity, a great building. We have friends who live there. I've had the opportunity to attend meetings in the amphitheater there. You know, it's a great facility, and I'm sure that Phase Two will be done in much the same fashion. The only thing I'd say is that, you know, we're learning as we go, and this is another type of TIF. You know, I'm looking forward to learning more about that and exactly how that works and how it may differ compared to the recent ones that we've done. But I think what I've heard so far is very promising, and your transparency and your willingness to share details and background of the plans is very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo what the two counselors before me said. Sooner the better is fine with me and has my full support.
Yes, I'm enormously supportive of this. And these are thirty-year TIFs, so that's what the proposal is. And so, after thirty years, it's taxable. So, it doesn't go on forever, but I'm particularly pleased with the contribution that the town can make to leverage its Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to get these kinds of projects done, because this is a forty units for two-hundred thousand, fifty thousand a unit, whereas units would normally cost several hundred thousand dollars to build on an individual basis. So, this is the kind of leveraging that we always contemplated.
And I would concur with my fellow counselors a hundred and fifty percent behind this. Can you save some spot for my mom? You know, the two things I would ask you to think about and consider as you move forward into the planning pieces are meeting space, even for small groups, is at a premium. I mean, there are groups that want to find places to just, you know, sit around a table, and we can't find it. So, if you have a room like that, you know, we can make it a little bit more well-known or aware.
We have a library at Bessie One. We have two community spaces, large rooms downstairs.
I'm going to be in touch.
Plus a workshop.
Yeah.
Plus the two classrooms on the top floor.
That's great. I just never knew.
It's all elevator access.
Yeah, I didn't know that either. Yeah.
And it's such an attractive space. I know groups would love to go in. Plus, it gives a little bit of exposure to the wonderful facility that it is.
It does.
Exactly.
And it's good activity for residents.
Makes them feel more connected and part of things as well.
And I think, you know, our front lawn is opposite your new building in Town Hall. I mean, we try to maintain that, take care of it. It's... I take pride in it because I live here.
Right. And so, the other thing I would advocate for is, as you would probably guess, is some kind of trail system. You know, there might even be a partner out there who would do that for you, but I don't know.
I don't really need a partner necessarily. I just need some more cooperation. You know, it might be that we work with our next-door neighbor at the main veterans home. And there's land down there.
Right. Well, that's what I mean, and we've talked a lot about wanting, you know, greater interconnectivity.
Right.
And so, it just wouldn't be...
So, I mean, we can always get to Commerce Drive, and then people can go down to the end of Commerce Drive and get on the eastern, and then come around. So, there's lots of possibilities there.
Great. Thank you for coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
And it looks like you have pretty widespread support, and I imagine the other two counselors would be supportive as well.
Well, I want to thank you for being a partner with us, too, because it works both ways. And I know Tom has been wonderful to work with, and I appreciate it. I'm glad to get to know him better. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have the public notice drafted. I think it needs maybe final proofing. We have ample time to meet the ten-day requirement. Do recall that this is a two-step process. We can do them both at the same time, and that those two steps are, one, to remove the, I'll call it Lot Two, out of the existing TIF district and redo those documents accordingly, and then create a separate TIF district for this project. And that will be done kind of concurrently, part of the same process.
Yeah, unless someone sees a reason not to just do it at one session, it seems like it's just a two-step process procedurally, and I think we should do it all in one.
From an approval point of view, we're looking to align the two aspects of that.
It will certainly help me in my financing because as soon as I receive this, then I will be able to move forward with my applications and complete that. Then, it's just a matter... I'm not waiting for a funding cycle. Main Housing has some money that they can make available to this, and the four-percent credit is a kind of a lock-in basis, and we will proceed as quickly as possible. My biggest issue is I've got plan board approval, and it expires in December. My biggest issue is, I've got plan and board approval, and it expires in December. I actually went for a 9% credit round a year ago, a little over a year ago. Scarborough does not qualify, they had targeted some other communities, so we did not, we did not score as well as we might have, or, when we scored on Bessie One, we had 100%, I mean, we scored on every level. Things have changed since then, so, I just want to get this done for the community, so I'm going to go in on the 4%.
I had a question on the timing and the steps, so, you know, there is, there is fair amount of additional information that we'd like to look at, and a couple of these things are pretty basic documents, the current lease agreement, the current TIF and the post-TIF. So, I am not necessarily opposed to doing it in one move, however, I am concerned about adequate timeframe for us to get our heads around it, and the, for, you know, the public to have some line of sight to this as well, in terms of those documents being posted, and the public being able to read those as well. So, if we can do all that in one move, I'm fine with it, if not, I think we need to take the time, and I don't know what the time factor is, the delta is between those two things, is it 10 days or 100 days, I don't know, but...
The largest duty is the 19th.
The 19th, this is teed up to come back to you, starting on the 19th. I have the, those source documents you're inquiring about, and I could certainly make them available to council and to the public as well.
All right, so it gives us two weeks before, yeah.
Does that satisfy your concern?
It's okay for me, it's a busy week ahead in terms of an election and end of school and stuff, so I defer to what the other counselors feel on the timing.
Any other further concerns? I have none.
I don't really need any.
I'm fine.
I guess the other concern or acknowledgement is that the council will move to its summer schedules, so you'll only be twice, once in July and once in August, and so, the sooner we get this started, the sooner we can get it completed, but your point's well taken.
So, those, you'll have those?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
I'll make them available.
The documentation that you're requesting is readily available, is Tom?
Yeah.
It's hard to ask that we post it, that we post it, and then, you know...
We'll have it posted before the weekend, sir.
Yes.
Good idea.
Thanks.
Public disclosure, give them two weeks.
Yes, absolutely. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You two remind me of...
I'm just going to warm up.
Yeah.
Oh, I know what's doing.